6:07 and I call this regular governing board meeting to order. All board members with the exception of Kim Robinson are present. Representing the district is going to be interim superintendent Terry Romo, Crystal Wambach, Bonnie Gomez, and Michelle Wambach. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The next item on our agenda would be board meeting minutes not previously approved, and that would be the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17, 2025.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17, 2025.
You may announce that.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Two.
Passes four zero. All right. Next item on the agenda would be our summary of current events, and we will start with interim superintendent Terry Romo.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, lots of things are going on, so I'm just gonna kind of give you some of the highlights. So, Wednesday, July 30 is going to be our first day of school. It will be here before we know it. We really want to focus in this year with the community about how important attendance is. Attendance is an issue here. It's an issue in our state. It's an issue across our country. And so, we really want to make sure that families understand how important it is to send their kiddos to school. We know that a lot of kids have probably been staying up a little bit later than usual or getting up later than usual. And so, we really encourage our families to start setting routines a week or possibly two before school actually starts. Get that sleep schedule started so that they are physically, mentally ready for school. We always encourage our kiddos to have a good breakfast before the school day starts, but we also have a food service organization who can, is happily offering meals. I encourage families to reach out to the schools if they do need to apply, like for free or reduced lunch. We do have availability to support families on that. We have lots of supports within this community. We also have supports for our families who are experiencing homelessness. Homelessness doesn't always just mean somebody living out on the street. It might mean that they are doubled up with other families. They might be moving from motel to motel. We do see quite a bit of that. Sometimes it's some of our older high school students who are moving, kind of couch surfing from place to place. So, we do have programs to support them. We have school supplies, backpacks. We are so blessed by several churches in our community, several just volunteer groups who also donate school supplies. So, please don't let that be the reason that your kiddo can't go to school. We will work with them to help support as much as we possibly can. And we have several new administrators joining us this year amongst just even sitting here at this table. We're all sort of, lots of us are in different roles. Bonnie's the only one who got to stay put. And so, welcome to Crystal Wambach, who's taking over for me, and Michelle Wambach, who's taking over for Heather Rada and Exceptional Student Services. I know the board, they got to meet Chris Smith, who is taking over from Village Meadows Elementary, our A-plus school of excellence. He comes to us from New Hampshire with many years of experience as a building principal, and so, we are so glad to welcome him, and he's here this evening. Brianna McDaniel, she's not a new face here in this room, but she is going to be the new principal at PDS. We actually had the joy of working together years ago. She was a teacher at PDS and then left and went on to Buena High School to be an assistant principal and is now back to be able to serve there and is very excited to do so. We just met today on my listening tour. She was my first up amongst the principals. And then you also got to meet Jeanette Paz. She is a Crystal Apple Award-winning principal, joining us after several years serving as a successful principal in the Tombstone District. So, welcome to Jeanette. We're so glad they're all, let's give them a round of applause, though. We're so glad they're here. And Crystal Wambach and the curriculum team have been hard at work because they welcomed over 60 new teachers to our district this year, and that's kudos to all of our principals sitting through interviews, the HR department, and obviously, the work of curriculum, getting things ready to really welcome our team. They get to come in for five days, and that is off and running this week, and so, we are so excited. Board members, you're always welcome to stop by to say hi if you get an opportunity to. I know they would love to be able to meet you. We have, as you know, as a board, our new Sierra Vista Unified District Explorers Program for our elementary, really focusing in on our art, music, STEM, physical education, and library technology, all taught by certified teachers. We have a new drones program coming to Joyce Clark Middle School. The drones are actually already on site. I haven't got to play with them, but I know others have and had lots of fun, and the instructor from Joyce Clark is actually taking courses this summer to be able to be up and have that program up and running for the first, when school comes back in. In addition, the drones, in addition to a grant from SSVEC, who's a huge sponsor of our school district, adding lots of new STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math programs. We're adding two new career and technical courses up at Buena, CTE programs. We're excited about our new fire science program, as well as a new coding program, are both coming in to our high school. We also work closely with Cochise College for our dual enrollment program for those kiddos who want to do a little, get a little bit of a head start with taking some of their college classes while it doesn't cost their parents as much money. I'm sure their parents will appreciate that. I know it took a whole semester off my own kiddo's at school adventure, so that's wonderful. We also have a wonderful partnership, one of the few in the entire state, with Arizona State University for our ASU Prep Global Academy that's here at Sierra Vista. Our high school program, they, everybody's been sending me lots of information. They're so excited about the year. We have a new dynamic fine arts program, starting with two top-notch plays being presented, Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, along with a popular Broadway show entitled Six, is coming this year. And if you go past most any field within Sierra Vista right now, because we offer over 21 sports at Buena High School, which is a lot of teams, but all of our fall teams are out practicing. So, you'll see football team out there, the cheerleaders are out, band has got band camp going on. There's just all kinds of stuff happening. So, look forward to having all of us come out and really support our kiddos this year, whether they're at the elementary, preschool, elementary, middle school, high school. Lots of fun things and wonderful things going on. One of the things I'm super excited about is on our website, which is svusd68.org, we have an entire section of our website dedicated to back-to-school. It's back-to-school guide for families so they can go on, and so, we're excited about that, that that's something new this year, so to help families understand how to be able to get their students enrolled and information that they would need to be able to support their kids, some information about getting that schedule in place. And we are just excited to be kicking off the year at our Welcome Back Event for our staff on July 29, right before school starts, and we'll have a breakfast with our staff and just really welcoming everyone back. We obviously invite our board to be able to be there. And one of the things that I'm really focusing in on this year is like, kind of like my little, oh, he's putting up our, our Welcome Back to School information for parents, is that our work really matters here in SVUSD, and the people that work here really matter in SVUSD. I got a chance to be able to talk with our teachers, new teachers to our district, and I went over a couple of things that are sort of for me or some non-negotiables, and they're going to be things that we will continue to work on. We know that there's a lot of competition in this town. We know that people can choose to send their children anywhere. It is our job and our responsibility to provide an education that they want to have their kids to be part of. And part of that, it needs to be a dedication from us as a school community to keep our children safe. We have to be able to do that. And so, it's not always easy, and we have lots of systems in place, but I think it's important that I shared with all of them that the words they say to children matter, the things, how they make those kids feel, it matters, and we don't hurt kids in SVUSD. It won't be tolerated. It will be reported, and I just wanted to make sure that that was made clear to you as a board, that I did share that with all of them. They actually clapped. I think they all agree because majority of people in this world do the right thing each and every day, but we will do what we have to do on, on the district's side to keep our students and our families safe. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Romo. All right. We will now move on to the governing board, and we will start with Mrs. Rochford.
Okay. I just want to share my heart a little bit. I just want to, I'm hoping, first of all, that everybody had a relaxing and fun and something good over the summer break that happened to them, and now, we're looking forward to something new and new challenges as we face the next coming months here at school. We welcome Mrs. Romo in her new position, and so many others, from the new principals to new teachers, to lots of changes that we're excited about. It's always good to have changes. We learn things about each other through a change. So, I just wanted to say, I'm praying and hoping for new goals, that we would definitely embrace team effort. I think that's crucial, that we work collectively and set our goals and, and do it by team, and that one of our goals is to raise the standard of excellence. And so, I am totally in favor of all that because as a retired school nurse and having worked 20 years in the district and seen all kinds of problems, I know and believe that our students are worth the dedication that we need to make. And we are, as you were saying, in competition with other schools and charter schools and you name it, but we can do it. I'm totally convinced when we bring our giftings and our talents and we do our best for the kids, we will see a difference. I'm believing for that. So, I'm excited about the next six months. I'm believing that something good is going to happen, and I just want to welcome everyone back and know that, just keep, keep looking up. Something good is in the making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rochford, and we will move on to Mr. Conroy.
Well, good evening. I had a very wonderful summertime with a few distractions. Time up on Minnesota Lakes was great. Fireworks here in Sierra Vista were phenomenal, and I'm looking forward to getting around and visiting with the principals that I haven't yet seen. So, the 25th of this month, I'll be going over to Buena and visit with them, and then I'll be setting up some dates to go see our new principals and to see a little bit more about them and how they are approaching their schools. So, I'm excited about that, and I'm very excited about our new superintendent and look forward to working with her.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy, and now we'll move on to Mrs. Sheriff.
I don't have anything this evening. I just can't believe it's all starting back up again. I'm not, I, I'm never ready for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheriff. I will just say thank you to our new administrators and our existing administrators in their new role, and just excited for the new things going on and hopeful for a great year. And so, moving on, we don't have any presentations, so next would be public comments, and we don't have any public comments. So, next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I will second the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do have an issue again with funding activities that are associated with the consent agenda. I am concerned that the additional payments to staff, particular to administration and managers, we know that the state audit found some issues with the district and that we are basically 10% higher than comparable districts elsewhere. So, I don't really fully understand all the expenditures that are requested, and for that reason, I will abstain from voting. Thank you.
Right. Is there any other discussion regarding the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, three, it passes three, zero with one abstention. All right. Moving on, our next item would be approval of the FY 2025-2026 adopted budget. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding the passage of the fiscal year 2025-2026 adopted budget as presented.
As per ARS 15905, no later than July 15 of each year, the governing board of each school district shall prepare and furnish an adopted budget to the Department of Education. The budget will be submitted to ADE prior to the deadline and will be available via link from the district's website. Administration recommends approval.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 2526 adopted budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on the agenda would be approval of the Code of Excellence. It is recommended that the governing board approve the Code of Excellence, which has been reviewed and approved by the interim superintendent, Mrs. Terry Romo.
Each year, the Office of the Superintendent reviews the district Code of Excellence to ensure that it reflects the ideals of the district and holds to current practice before presenting it to the board for approval. I would like to mention that every item that is on the Code of Excellence is directly related to governing board policy. That's, was something that was very important as this document was being created, was that these are things that are in policy that we are expected to uphold. Administration recommends approval.
I move that we approve the Code of Excellence.
Yes, and I will second that.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Moving on to our next item, that would be request approval of the resignation of professional staff member Melissa Arieta. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for resignation from professional staff member Melissa Arieta.
Melissa Arieta submitted her resignation on June 27, 2025, with an effective date of June 27, 2025. Supporting documentation is on file in the Human Resources Office. Administration recommends approval of Melissa Arieta's resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on the agenda would be waiver of policy GCQC for professional staff member Melissa Arieta. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for waiver of liquidated damages pursuant to policy and regulations, GCQC, resignation of professional staff member Melissa Arieta.
Melissa Arieta submitted her request for waiver of the liquidated damages in the amount of 1,000 pursuant to policy and regulation, GCQC, resignation of professional staff members. This meets the criteria. Supporting documentation was received and is on file at the Human Resources Office.
I move that we approve the waiver request.
Yes, and I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. The next item on the agenda would be request approval of the resignation of professional staff member Samantha Alvarez. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for resignation from professional staff member Samantha Alvarez.
Samantha Alvarez submitted her resignation on June 27, 2025, with an effective date of June 27, 2025. Supporting documentation is on file with Human Resources Office. Administration recommends approval of Samantha Alvarez's resignation.
May I move to approve?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on the agenda would be waiver of policy GCQC for professional staff member Samantha Alvarez. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action regarding a request for waiver of liquidated damages pursuant to policy and regulations, GCQC, resignation of professional staff member Samantha Alvarez.
Samantha Alvarez submitted her request for waiver of the liquidated damages in the amount of 1,000 pursuant to policy and regulation, GCQC, resignation of professional staff members. It does not meet the criteria. Supporting documentation was received, but does not apply.
I move that we deny the waiver request.
I'll second that. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So, the, a quick question. So, the reason it's being denied is because there was no documentation submitted?
Documentation was submitted, but it does not support the reason for her liquidated damage requests. But again, I'm just submitting what was provided to us. It is up to the governing board to decide whether to approve or deny the request.
Okay. I guess, I guess my question is, if it was a medical request, was, you say it didn't meet whatever the requirements are? Can you maybe explain what?
Without going into any specifics, the request was submitted, but it did not indicate that Ms. Alvarez could not continue working based on the medical request.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes three, one. Next item on our agenda would be the Good News Club Facility Use and Waiver. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take action to approve the waiver of facility fees for the use of all district elementary sites for after-school use by the Child Evangelism Fellowship to offer the Good News Club after-school program.
The CEF's Good News Club is a nonprofit, Bible-centered, non-denominational program that teaches and encourages biblical morals and values through a structured curriculum provided by the CEF. The club is free to be offered one day a week following the district school calendar and facility rules. The Good News Club has been approved by the governing board for many years and good standing within the district at various schools. This is obviously an after-school event that parents choose or not, or choose not to have their children participate in. Administration recommends approval.
Can we take action to approve the CEF program, the after-school program, and the Child Evangelism Fellowship group?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Moving on to the next item, that would be approval of managed service provider, Sunburst Workforce Advisors LLC. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and approve the managed service provider agreement with Sunburst Workforce Advisors LLC.
After undergoing their request for proposal process in collaboration with the business office and reviewing six submissions, the RFP team selected Sunburst Workforce Advisors LLC. The managed service provider agreement will allow Sunburst Workforce Advisors LLC to manage the placement of contracted personnel under the request, guidance, and direction of the Sierra Vista Unified School District to provide needed staffing when the district is unable to secure their own through local recruiting efforts. This agreement gives Sunburst Workforce Advisors the authority to manage all contracting needs and benefits the district by only having to work with a single point of contact. The administration recommends approval.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick comment. This Romo, this is one of those items that, as a new person, I would have liked to have had a presentation beforehand, at least to know more about what this company provides, what they do and all that. And I would just ask that if in the future we have something like this, you might consider a presentation maybe offline or beforehand so we could kind of get, I could get more information.
I think that is very, something definitely that is doable. I know that's something that, as I've been meeting with different board members to do the interviews, having an opportunity for you to be able to ask questions prior to, I know we try to get the board meeting agenda out so prior, so if any, ever you read something that's on the board agenda, please make sure that you reach out. Bran will definitely get you in touch with the department that can help best answer your question.
Was there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be approval of sponsors for Buena Athletics. It is recommended that the governing board approve the following businesses as sponsors for Buena Athletics. Due to the generous support of our business community, we are able to offer more learning opportunities to our students and explore all the features of the new scoreboards at Buena. That would be, premier partner would be Rainy Payne &amp; Performance, SSVEC, and then anchor partner would be Culvers, Gengers Auto Title Service, and Ed Morsie.
The governing board must approve all businesses to become sponsors per policy KHB, and we are just extremely grateful to this community's support. They have brought in more donors than we've had in, in many previous years, just at this first time of the year. We're so thankful to our community.
So move that we approve these sponsors?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be designation of FY 26 County Treasurer Voucher Signatures. It is recommended that the governing board authorize the following signers for vouchers written through the Cochise County Treasurer's Office, and that would be for district vouchers, that would be Donald Lee, that would be me, Bonnie Gomez, and for student activity vouchers, that would be Crystal Wambach for Student Activities Treasurer, and Bonnie Gomez.
Authorized signatures for all checking accounts shall be approved by the board as per policy DGA. Administration recommends approval.
So moved.
And second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda is designation of FY 26 JP Morgan Check Signers. It is recommended that the governing board authorize the following signers for checks written from JP Morgan Check Signers, and that would be Rachel Pollak, Kim Hickel, Laurel McEwen, Sarah Klausen, Fran Miller, Bonnie Gomez, and Janet Klein until September 9, 2025.
Yes. Authorized signatures for all checking accounts shall be approved by the board as per policy DGA. Administration recommends approval, and I'm not sure if Janet's still here, but it's usually, you have to have two signers on every check, so that's why there's more.
So moved.
And second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on the agenda would be Student Activities Treasurer. It is recommended that the governing board appoint Crystal Wambach as Student Activities Treasurer for the remainder of Treasurer for the remainder of FY 26.
The governing board annually appoints a Student Activities Treasurer, ARS 151122, based on that, and administration recommends approval.
Just want to say, I know you guys did just approve her a couple of months ago. I want to reiterate, that was for fiscal year 25, or, yes, and so this is for the remainder of this fiscal year.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be approval of district authorized grant representatives. It is recommended that the governing board authorize Janet Klein, Crystal Wambach, and Michelle Wambach to submit grant applications on behalf of and act as authorized representatives of the governing board for all grants deemed beneficial to the district.
Arizona Department of Education is now requiring local education agencies, LEAs, governing boards to authorize administration representatives to file applications on behalf of the LEA and otherwise act as the authorized representatives of the LEA in connection with all grant applications. Please know that we do always meet about our grants, discuss them, to ensure that they're being used for the best interest of the districts as a whole, but those people that are actually overseeing the grants are the ones to submit them. Administration recommends approval.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. If we have, let's say, one of the principals that comes up with a grant idea or a grant, then they would come to those folks and present it to them, or?
Actually, we have a different process for that. There's a form that they get, it's a single, real simple, one-page form, if a principal wants to write for a grant. Like a lot of our principals or even teachers write to like the SSBC grant, and so they just fill out that one-page document, let them know that they're applying, they attach a copy of the grant that they are submitting. It's just to ensure that we're not, it has to get signed off by myself, as well as business office, just to ensure, because sometimes grants, you have to make sure you read all the small print, to make sure that you're not signing us up for something that could actually cost the district money. So it's, but we try to make the process as easy as possible, and almost all of them are ones like, oh, we know, we know they're good, we can just approve those, so.
Very good, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be approval of district signatories. It is recommended that the governing board authorize Janet Klein, Heather Rada, Crystal Wambach, and Michelle Wambach to submit grant applications on behalf of and act as authorized signatories of the governing board for all grants deemed beneficial to the district.
So moved.
And second?
Hold on.
You're so eager, I really appreciate it. Actually, I lost my place with all of these different ones, so making sure that I'm reading the right one. Can we confirm what the number is? Is it?
14.
14.
14. That doesn't help, I have seven B. Oh, yes, I think that is it. ADE is now requiring, oh, that's the same one I just did. I think they all say the exact same thing. Here we go. ADE is now requiring, that's where I got confused, I'm like, I just read that. And that's right, I did. Here we go. ADE is now requiring local education agencies, LEA, governing boards to authorize administration representatives to file applications on behalf of the LEA and otherwise act as the authorized representatives of the LEA in connection with all grant applications. Administration recommends approval, once again.
So moved.
And second?
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be ratification of authorized grant entity authorized signer for fiscal year 26. It is recommended that the governing board authorize Bonnie Gomez as the entity authorized signer to sign on behalf of the governing board for all grants deemed beneficial to the district.
And this rationale is going to sound like a deja vu moment for all of us. ADE is now requiring local education agencies, governing boards to authorize administration representatives to file applications on behalf of the LEA and otherwise act as the authorized representative of the LEA in connection with all grant applications. Administration recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be approval of out-of-state travel for Buena Decca. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and take possible action regarding approval of the out-of-state travel request for Buena marketing students to participate in the Graphics Pro Expo in Long Beach, California.
The governing board must approve all out-of-state travel requests. There are eight students, one district employee, and one volunteer. They will travel by plane to Long Beach, California. The funding will come from student activity funds. Graphics Pro Expo is an industry trade show that will give the students an opportunity to experience hands-on displays of professional printing and design techniques, exposure to industry trends and equipment, and will provide opportunities to develop entrepreneurial skills and actionable ideas which they can utilize to improve school-based operations. Administration recommends approval.
Second.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. Next item on our agenda would be acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the governing board accept with gratitude the following donations as read by district administration.
The following donation? Oops, turn that on.
The following donation was received, $450 worth of driveway rock and clean fill from Diamond Elite Estates to be used for landscaping throughout the district. Administration recommends approval with gratitude.
So moved.
With gratitude.
Second.
Second and with gratitude.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Just thank you very much for the donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero. The next item on our agenda would be information and discussion items. There would be things we can discuss but would not vote on. Bran?
I have a couple of items for the board. Just a reminder that next week, the 22nd, you are having a PA report-only board meeting. There will be no calls of the public, there will be no action items beyond approving the PA report. That is, so we can get any last minute teacher hires, staff hires, in before the start of the school year, well, before the start of school. The second thing is, I sent all board members an email today on a request for re-enrollment of a suspended student, I'm sorry, expelled student, thank you, Mrs. Sheriff. The board must have an executive session to consider that request, and I will be sending out emails for future dates on when that is. We should try to do it before the 30th, the first day of school, so that if the board does determine to allow that student to re-enroll, they can get registered before school actually begins. And that's it.
I just had a question about the PA report-only meeting, can you confirm the time and place?
6:00 PM in the bunker.
Thank you.
For the district administration building, as it's officially called.
All right, thank you, Bran. Does anybody else have any information or discussion items? All right, very good, we'll move on to the next item, and that would be request for future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? All right, hearing none. I would move on to the next item, and that would be asking for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I will second that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes four zero.